Good evening.
Good evening.
Called the Monday, August 16, 2021, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome, everyone. At this time, will you join me for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Good Lord have me, Father.
Thank you for once again, for allowing us to come to the place where we will handle the people's business. Give us the strength, the guidance, and the courage to do what is right. Continue to bless each and every family that's represented here today, each and every family that's represented on this podium, and all our soldiers that serve and represent us here in these fantastic United States of America. We are very grateful for your love and for your compassion, and Jesus Christ on low we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. That brings us to our public comment period this evening. As you know, this is an opportunity for citizens to engage with the Commissioners and to share their thoughts. We will ask each speaker to limit their remarks to three minutes. We will also ask each speaker, when they come to the podium, to please give us their full name and home address. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. This brings us to item one. It's approval of the agenda.
Can I get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number two. I believe we have some presentations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I am so proud of the two men we are recognizing tonight, Cumberland County Attorney Rick Morfield and District Attorney Billy West. Mr. Morfield, will you join me at the podium? Mr. Morfield has spent much of his legal career representing and serving local government across the state of North Carolina. Proud to be appointed as a Cumberland County Attorney. In 2010, Mr. Morfield was the county attorney and county manager in Sampson County and an assistant county attorney in Cumberland County. Has also served as county attorney for Macon and Alamance Counties. In addition, he is a former Alamance County Commissioner. He is a native of North Carolina and a graduate of the University of North Carolina School of Law, and he earned a master's degree in public administration from UNC Greensboro. He is a knowledge expert in local government law, recognized both across the state of North Carolina and nationally. Mr. Morfield was named Outstanding County Attorney of the Year in 2019 by his peers at the North Carolina Association of County Attorneys. He is a former president of that association. Most recently, he was elected as the President of the National Association of County Civil Attorneys, a position he currently holds. He is also a member of the National Association of County Board of Directors. The Board of Commissioners would like to present this call to Mr. Morfield in recognition of his service as the President of the National Association of County Civil Attorneys and a member of NACO Board of Directors. It is my privilege and my honor to present you this call on behalf of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Now, District Attorney Billy West. Congratulations. Mr. West was elected as Cumberland County District Attorney in 2010 after serving 10 years as an assistant district attorney for former PA Ed Brax. As Cumberland County District Attorney, Mr. West leads the fourth-largest district attorney's office in North Carolina. He has created a repeat offender program to identify successfully prosecutor offenders who continue to commit serious crimes in our community. Mr. West and his staff has partnered with law enforcement and others in the court system on initiatives such as the Gun Violence Task Force, Drug Court, Sobriety Court, Veterans Court, and Human Trafficking Court. I would like to thank Mr. West for his work with expundery clinics, which have helped more than 1,000 people who were eligible to expunge a one-time nonviolent offense from their records. Mr. West is also involved in state and national organizations. He is a member of the North Carolina District Attorneys Association of the North Carolina Conference of District Attorneys. He was elected by his fellow district attorneys in the state to serve as President of the North Carolina Conference of District Attorneys, which selected him to serve as North Carolina's representative on the National District Attorneys Association Board. In July, he was sworn in as the President of the National District Attorneys Association after serving as the association's treasurer. He was born and raised in Cumberland County, and he received his bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University and his law degree from Campbell University. The Board of Commissioners would like to present this call to Mr. West in recognition of his service as the President of the National District Attorneys Association.
I'd like to thank the Commissioners and I thank everyone who's here as well. I won't talk long, although us lawyers like to do that, you'll probably know that. But in any event, I will say that I almost became emotional on the day I was getting sworn in, as it was about 15 minutes before we started. And he had mentioned it months ago, but I didn't really follow up and in walked my good friend, and as he calls himself, my big brother, Commissioner Charles Edmonds. So that was quite an honor to have him there. And it is an honor to be President of the National District Attorneys Association. But as I said that day, and I'll say every day, the biggest honor of my professional career is representing my hometown Fayetteville, my home county of Cumberland, where I was born and raised, as your District Attorney.
The reason that these two men were recognized, I'm sure you probably picked it up when I was speaking of them, is because it was said that this is the first time that in Cumberland County we've had two national presidents here in the same room, and what an honor it is. At this time, I would like to call on Vice Chairman, Mr. Glenn Adams, Commissioner Adams, for recognition.
Mr. Chairman, can you come down with me? It's, I think that in line of this, if someone presented to the county commissioner, because the recipient can't be here, and since you're the chair, if you come on down, I'll explain it a lot better.
As we are aware, we all serve on this board of county commissioners, and we are part of a state association, the North Carolina State County Commission Association. And off of this board, which is 100 counties represented, we've had three state presidents that come for Cumberland County. We've had Kenneth Edge, who was, I saw him Saturday night there, Mr. B.R. King, and Virginia Oliver. And so while we were at the state convention, they have what they call the Hall of Fame. And one of our own, Virginia Oliver, Thompson Oliver, was inducted into the Hall of Fame. And I think it's remarkable that that happened. I'm going to read you the remarks of Kevin Leonard, who is the executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Part of what makes our organization so strong is we remember our past, and particularly those leaders who came before us who make a difference. During the past year, we've experienced many firsts and realized how important it is to take a moment and reflect on other firsts that matter to us. Former Cumberland County Commissioner Virginia Thompson Oliver was the first female commissioner elected in the county and our association's first female president. Past President Oliver was appointed Commissioner in 1978 following the untimely death of her husband Larry Thompson, who was serving as a commissioner and with aspirations to run for governor. The county attorney at the time, Hema Clark, encouraged her to complete her husband's term, and she did. Past President Oliver went on to run for three more successful terms and served as the chair of her board. She became the first female to serve as our association's president in 1985 and 86. She is known to have been instrumental in the development of Cape Fair Valley Medical Center, the county library, and the merger of the city and county systems in Cumberland County. She clearly made a positive mark on her community and without a doubt, our association. We are truly honored to induct past President Oliver into the NCACC Hall of Fame. She could not be there to accept the award. I accept it on her behalf, and as chairman, she cannot be here today. She's about to have some surgery. But I wanted to be able to give this to our Board of Commissioners, and hopefully, when she's up and about, she'll be able to come and give her own remarks. It's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Virginia Oliver, Hall of Fame inductee, class of 2021, the only one, and she was a former Cumberland County Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I present that to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. I think that salute to all of us, the things that are done in Cumberland County, and so thank you so much for allowing me to be able to do that. I think Ms. Oliver is watching us virtual, so if you got some remarks from the board, that would indeed be... So, Virginia, congratulations.
Well, we are very proud of former Commissioner Oliver. And I've always wanted to say this, I hope you are listening, I got this at my house.
Virginia, I saved it for you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the Board of Commissioners. You know, it was, one of my church members says, "A poor frog who won't croak in his own pond." And so I think it's important for us to always remember those who served before us and with us, so thank you.
And thank you, sir. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number three, your consent agenda.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so much. County Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number four, our public hearings. We'll begin with our uncontested rezoning cases. The first case is case P-21-26, and we have our planning and inspections Director, Mr. Rawls Howard. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
So the first item that I have on the agenda is case P-21-26. So as you can see, oh, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So as you can see here where this case is located, but it's in the Graves Creek area. As you can see, that's highlighted by the star on the map. So the applicant and the owner is Northwood Investments. On behalf of Galberry Run Land Development LLC, the request is to go from A1 to R20. So for those of you that may or may not know, A1 is one unit per two acres down to one unit per half acre, or 20,000 square feet, for a little about, for about 14.04 acres, as you can see there. So you can see the subject property here is pretty much surrounded by a lot of residential as it stands right now. You can see the zoning here, so there is some precedent out there for RR. We have RR and R6A that's out there in addition to the A1. As I said, this is uncontested, so it went to the planning board. It was recommended by staff. It's compliant with all of our land use plans, and it was recommended by the planning board as well. So I'll be glad to go into the case if you deem it necessary.
Are there any?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is there water and sewer out there?
I do, no, sir, there's not.
It's down in the Graves Creek area?
Mm-hmm.
Y'all know me. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could we have the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing. Now, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner Lancaster.
In case P-21-26, planning inspections staff, I move to recommend approval of the zoning requests from A1 Agricultural District to R20 Residential District and find the request consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan designation of low-density residential. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the district requested is in harmony with the surrounding existing land use and zone. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Council in Keith, and Commissioner Booth, voting in opposition, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Stewart. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, sir.
All right, so moving on to case P-21-27. Let me pull these up. This case is located, as you can see by the location map, between Fayetteville and the Hope Mills area. The applicant's Sharon A. Edwards. The request is from R10 to go to C1P for planned local and district. This is on Camden Road, as you start to head out toward the Rockfish intersection that's there, but you can see it highlighted on the section there in red. I believe the plan was to put some vinyl flooring business, if I'm not mistaken, is what the applicant has told us. So it's got some hodgepodge of commercial and residential uses around it, but you can see by here where it sits in relation to the city of Hope Mills and what's around it. You have a convenience store and some other types of assorted businesses and a church. But you can see the zoning as well here. It's pretty much set up that intersection for a lot of commercial zoning by the CP, the C1P, and so forth that you can see on the map. Staff had recommended it. It was compliant with all of our plans. It went to the planning board, and they have recommended it as well.
Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing?
There are no speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question for Mr. Stewart.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Rawls, the, this is surrounded by residential, pretty much. Now, the C1P up there, is there anything on that property right now?
I believe there is. I'm looking at my staff. So there is something on that property, I believe, right now. I can go through this slideshow, we can see the actual subject property. Yeah, so the subject property right now is a house that, it's my understanding, that had been used as a business before. But again, as far as the plans for what's going to happen in the future, I don't know if the applicant, I don't know if the applicant's here, but if they're going to tear it down or rebuild, or just operate out of the existing structure.
And to feed off of Commissioner Adams' last question, I don't believe there's water and sewer on this, sewer on this line either.
It's got water, but no sewer.
Right. Okay.
Are there any more questions or discussions? If not, entertain a motion. Entertain a motion.
I'll take it. In the case of P-21-27, I move to deny the rezoning request from R10 Residential District to C1P Planned Local Business District and find the request not consistent with the Southwest Cumberland County Land Use Plan. Denial of this request is reasonable in the public interest because of the residential areas surrounding it.
Is there a second?
Come on, guys.
All in favor?
Voting in, voting in favor, Commissioners Council, Keith, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Stewart, voting in opposition, Commissioners Lancaster and Commissioner Booth.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on. I believe case P-21-31 has been deferred to the September 20 meeting, so I'm going to move on to case P-21-36, if that is permission from the board.
Okay.
36. So this case is more in the Cedar Creek areas. You can see that's highlighted by the star up on the map. You can see where it is, pretty much in the south, the southeastern part of the county. The applicant and the owner is Kathy Tatum Vincent. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural District to CP Planned Commercial District. You can see the unusually shaped property there that's highlighted in red that's crosshatched. You can see that it sits near the intersection of Tabor Church Roads and Stedman Cedar Creek Road. So it sits pretty much in a commercial node, has been identified on our plans, which calls for a little bit more intense commercial development. So with that being said, staff had recommended the request. It went to the planning board, and they ultimately had supported the request as well, too. I'll be happy to open up the presentation if there are questions or anything of that nature.
Open the public hearing? Are there any?
We do have one speaker this evening. He wishes to speak in favor, Mr. Steve Oliverio with Bartlett Engineering.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Oliverio. I'm with Bartlett Engineering, 1906 Nash Street in Wilson. We are here representing the owner and the developer. We're pleased to be here with staff's approval and planning board's favorable recommendation, and simply here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is the weird little line, is that a natural boundary of like a creek or old water bed or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Is it active now?
Yes, sir.
What about storms? How's that get affected?
Commissioner, we will need to go through all the normal steps of engineering process as this moves forward. We will be, have to be responding to DOT to follow all the state regulations on the road, as well as DEQ for any stormwater treatment, as well as Cumberland County and the town of Fayetteville.
Yeah, I was going to say, too, that, you know, I'll just add a little bit to that. Per the staff report, we, there's no identified flood zones on this property at all. We checked for wetlands. There's no identified wetlands that we could find with the data that we have. So basically, the creek is just, is just there. There are state rules about being able to stay off a certain distance from the creek, I believe, but that's all part of the development process that the gentleman brought up.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Will you go close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that.
That's okay.
Public hearing is closed. Now, is there any questions or discussion?
I got a question. Well, I do have a question. As Mr. Booth was talking about that, Lox Creek sits down below this, does it not?
I believe so.
And that whole neighborhood floods because this, all of this water just rolls down into Lox Creek, and the city's almost ready to put a moratorium on building in Lox Creek. I have pushed on Lox Creek, I think our assistant manager would tell you, in terms of the debris that was in that creek that was around there, these houses flood down in Lox Creek. And when we're upstream and uphill, and they tell me they haven't done the surveys, they haven't done the studies, to do this just beats up on all of those folk down there in Lox Creek. It's wrong. That whole neighborhood, every hurricane that comes through there floods, the creek floods, creek floods on a, just a good, normal rain day. So I would be opposed to this without those studies, because I'm just going to tell you, all of those people down, down in Lox Creek are going to have a, they're just, it's going to be bad. And all of that water flows down that way, and it's just wrong to be able to do those folk like that. So I would encourage this board, and I think, Mr. Booth, you asked that question, that's why it's there, but it does go right down into Lox Creek.
Commissioner Booth.
Yeah, and that's kind of leading to my question. Is there plans you're talking about to have to comply with? Is there any reason why we couldn't defer this rather than hear it tonight without that information? I think that is kind of crucial, is what, what, how dry or wet the bed is.
That would be up to you. If you want to defer, we can bring some information back at the next meeting to get more clarification on it.
If it gets voted down, they can't reapply for, what, a year or so?
Yes, sir.
Could you ask him how long it would take to get those studies or those maps?
Steve Oliverio, again. Commissioner, those studies with the stormwater and all that, that's all part of the site plan and construction plan process that we have to go through. We are not allowed to raise the amount of flow going into that creek that would affect any downstream properties by either putting in a retention pond or whatever may be required on this site. We're not allowed to raise the amount of flow that goes into that creek and goes downstream. So we're not at the point with site plan and planning development to, to give you that information. I can tell you that we are required by all state, local, and federal regulations to treat our stormwater before it leaves the site.
Okay, Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. Do we know what the purpose of this, why it's being gone to commercial?
At this time, the current developer is looking at just doing a small 8,000 to 10,000 square foot retail store.
Okay. But you have to understand, once we say "commercial" and we zone it "commercial," he could do pretty much whatever he wants on it, and we don't know what that effect may or may have. I understand you have to do your survey when you go through, but it's, it's a bit of a risk for me to put something in "commercial" without, surrounded by agriculture and residential, without knowing what it is going to be. Because once we do it, it's done. So that was my only comment I have.
And if you go "commercial," you're going to have some parking lot, you're going to have some hard surfaces, that water's going to ruin. I mean, that's just, that's, that's just the nature, sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's just the nature of how it's going to be. You may not add to it, but we know how that's going to be. And I think that's some of the things that, you know, I always talk about, how does this affect all of those other land things as we do these rezoning, because it really has a consequence. And they got this whole neighborhood that's sitting down here, and it's just, we just asking for some trouble. They're asking for some trouble.
Okay.
He did not take issue.
No more questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if this is leaning towards a total rejection, we would prefer to pull our request and come back and meet with staff and come up with some additional information. We do not want to lose a year.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion for deferment?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Make sure I'm pulling this correctly. 160 to 40, all right. One to forty, all right. So the next case is P twenty-one forty. You can see by the highlighted map that it's, uh, it's up in the north eastern section of the county, up near the Godwin area. So just wanted, just to, a pretty simple request for this one. This is the applicant is Michael Long Hanny, the agent's Terry Faircloth. They want to request to go from A one Agricultural District to R forty. This is a proposal for a cutout, so the lot that you see here would allow the applicant, the parent tract is currently sitting right this. This lot doesn't exist yet, but it will exist if the rezoning was, is approved. So the request is for point nine two acres for the house that currently exists on there now. I think it's my understanding that the applicant wants to add another house to the back part of the property, and they want to separate this house off. So you can see it's pretty much all agricultural land. You see some single-family residential and manufactured homes within the area. As I stated before, you, you have some R forty as a precedent that's sitting out there in the county now, just, just down the street, but for the most part, it's a lot of A one out there. So as you can see, the house is currently existing. It would be to subdivide this lot off and then to be able to do another house in the back. So if you, if you would like me to go into the presentation, I'll be glad to do that. Staff supported it. It complied with the plans, and when it went to the planning board, they also supported it as well.
Yes, sir. Go through the presentation.
Yes, sir. All right. So as I said before, this is the house that you can see here. It's proposed to be cut out off of Scotty Godwin Road and Stewart Road. When you look at what's out there, they do have PWC water that is there. There is no sewer. There's not so much of a concern. There's a little bit of concern of hydroric soils in the back part of the property for any kind of septic, but it does have water. When we looked at the plan, the Wade Land Use Plan calls for this to be one acre residential. So this pretty much is fitting the bill as far as what we define by R forty as being acre lots. It's to limit the location amount of manufactured housing. So by them subdividing this off, there's a house that's sitting out there now, and it does provide for the opportunity to do some more development in the back that would be compatible with the area. So we felt that, that the request was plan compliant. So as I said before, this is the subject property. This is the house that's there now. They're actually doing a lot of renovations to it. They've taken an old house and basically started to outfit it. When you look down or look north, I should say, looking up the road, along Stewart Road, you can see the subject property immediately on your left. This is the view that's looking across the street. This is a farm field. And then this is looking south on Stewart Road. You can see the house that's on the right, along with the zoning sign, right there in front of the porta potty that you can see. So again, staff had recommended approval. When it went to the planning board, they also recommended approval by a non-to-zero vote.
Thank you, sir. Open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers. Close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion by the board? Yes, Commissioner Booth.
The dotted line, okay, you go to the first boundary that it's a cutout of, that's good.
Right here?
That's good, yeah. Does the same family own the, the outer lying area that it's in?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. Do they own anything like the lot behind them or anything? Is this, that's what I'm saying. Now, what, what's the extent of their?
Just this, this parent tract, right here. Just this parent tract. I don't believe they own the land that's on, you know, that's surrounding them. They, they just own all of this, including the area in blue, and they want to split this house off from their existing property.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Lancaster.
Case P twenty-one dash forty, I move to approve the rezoning request of A one Agricultural District to R forty Residential District, and find the request consistent with the Wade Study Area Land Use, which calls for one acre residential in this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because R forty Residential District would allow dwelling types and density that are comparable, what is that? Can't see. Compatible, okay. And in harmony with the surrounding land use activities in zone.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Voting in favor, commission, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I clarify the second to the motion?
It was either me or counsel.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Moving on to case P twenty-one dash forty-four. You can see where this, uh, this is located. I believe it's out past, uh, out, 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 close to Airport Road, but you can see where it is highlighted on the, on the location map. So the applicant owner is Emmons and Wheeler LLC. The agent is Charlotte Emmons and Stephen Wheeler. The request is to go from MP to CP, which is our, our, our Workhorse Commercial District. But you can see by the map, this is Airport Road that runs in this area that you can see here. I know this is a rather busy map with a lot of lines, but here's Airport Road, and then here's Gillespie Street. So yeah, I think you guys pretty much know where that is. The property in question is highlighted here in this red with the crosshatch. It's pretty much surrounded by a lot of commercial operations. You can see here that's highlighted. You have a shed dealer, the fire department, equipment sales, convenience stores, and so forth and so on. But you can see it's pretty much a, a commercial corridor. You can see the zoning here. For the most part, a lot of it is zoned for CP. And you can see a lot of the industrial zone here. It is close to the city of Fayetteville. It has PWC water and sewer. So when we went to, when staff looked this over, we said it was compliant with the plans, which I believe calls for more heavy commercial out here. And when it went to the planning board, it was also supported by, by that board as well, too. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to go into the presentation if need be.
Are there any questions at this time? If not, we'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Close the public hearing now.
I got one question. I only have one question. I always have one question. As we talk about this and we talk about planning, coming in our community sometime coming down three oh one, it may not have anything to do with this, but I'm just asking. Do we require these folks to put any trees up to make it look nice? The one thing that, that we kind of lack sometime here in this community is that green space and some of that stuff. You know, one time the city of Fayetteville had, you had to have trees, and you couldn't have barbed wire and all of that. But, you know, you come down airport, get off the airport, and come down there and come up three oh one, and it's just, coming into our community just doesn't look good. I don't know if we, when we talk about planning, that we talk about in this with these people.
We do have some basic street tree type planning requirements for certain developments. I, I think it's fair to say that when, especially with newer staff that we have come onboard, we've identified possibly beefing those up and maybe doing some overlays for some corridor entrances into the county in certain areas. I think it's a larger planning discussion that we can have, but we can certainly broach that subject because that's something that we, as the senior management in the department, have identified as something that we could probably stand to beef up a little bit.
Thank you. I just wanted.
Well, you know what? It's going to take a little bit more than trees.
You got to start somewhere, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, in the case of P twenty-one dash forty-four, I move to approve the rezoning request from MP Plan Industrial District to CP Plan Commercial District, and find the request consistent with the South Central Cumberland Land Use Plan, which calls for heavy commercial at this location. The request is reasonable in the public interest because commercial development is compatible with the surrounding area and uses.
It's been moved as second, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess we're moving into the contested rezoning cases on the agenda. So the first case we have is case P twenty-one twenty-eight. As you can see where this is highlighted here, out, out, out toward the Stedman area. So this case was heard at the planning board in May. So there's a, since then, we've had a lot of dialogue with both the applicant and the developer, and we've heard a lot of feedback from the public. So with your permission, Commissioners, what I'd like to do is I'm going to walk through this presentation, show you what the planning board looked like, and then since the planning board meeting to where we are right now, we've had some discussions with the applicant who has offered up conditions and some new things he would like for you to consider. I have put those conditions at your dais for you to take a look at. But I was going to go through that and then let the applicant get up and speak about his project, about however you see fit, so.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
And I know you got all those modifications, whatever, and you expect us to read them tonight and look at them. But that's kind of what the planning board does. So why wouldn't these go back to the planning board for them to be able to hear it, to make some recommendation to this board? I mean, that's what the planning board does. I don't see why it skips over that process, even in the modification stage, because that's what they do. I mean, they have a much longer time to go through it. You got staff to go through it. So why didn't we do that process? I mean, that's, that makes more sense to me than bringing it directly here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, the planning board ended up denying it, and so, you know, at, 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 at that particular discussion, there was no discussion about adding conditions. I think the applicant took the feedback from the planning board and then said, "I want to be able to put this to the Board of Commissioners," which, as far as I know, he can do that in front of his body. I mean, but if you want to defer it back to the planning board, we can do that.
It just makes sense that that's what the planning board does. I don't, I'm, I'm only one. I, I'm not going to defer it. I'm just, I just asked a question that they have a lot more time to ask these questions, answer these questions, to work through that process.
Sure.
Here is either up and down vote, and it's going to be done. So I, I don't really care. I just, it just makes more sense to me that we may need to look at that process, if you're going to do modifications after, because then that vote means absolutely nothing to, to me of what the planning board did if you presenting something entirely different and new from what they heard.
Yeah, I mean, but the, yeah, so like at this particular point, we had a lot of internal discussions about that. So, but they did, he, he, I mean, our threshold was that he's not changing the plan as far as the layout, the streets. Maybe you're looking at smaller lots and things like that. So I mean, like, there was a critical point of, you know, is it substantial change to the plan that was enough to kick it back to the planning board? But after we sat there and we went through them, I mean, after I show you the first plan and then show you what he's proposed, there's not a whole heck of a lot of difference in.
Well, you told me it was a big difference between the modifications, so if it's not a big difference, it's not a big difference.
Well, as far as the layout, I mean, but I can get into that here in a minute and then let you take a look at it. If you feel like it, we can kick it back to the planning board.
The way they want to do it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Proceed.
Thank you. So the applicant owner is Mollies Farms LLC. The request is go from A one to R thirty Conditional District or CZ Conditional Zoning. You can see this is John Nunnery Road that you can see highlighted here to the eastern part or the eastern boundary of the, of the, of the case. You can see that this is the lot that's in question, and this is Mary McCall Road here that borders it to the west. So the proposed acreage is about, is about plus or minus forty-eight acres for the site. Pretty much surrounding this, you have a lot of agricultural land and single-family residential. Not too much past that. You can see a lot of the zoning out here. We do have R thirty that is sits just to the south of this request. You do have some cases of R forty now, up along John Nunnery, and then you have R forty that's down here. So it, it, but for the most part, it's primarily A one zoning out in this area. There's no water and sewer, but the soils are generally adequate for septic. You do have a little bit here in the corner that were some concerns, but I know talking with their engineer that the applicant has worked around that, which you'll see in the plan. When staff had looked at the Stedman Land Use Plan, of which this is, you know, pertinent to this particular request, it does split a boundary right here that you can see. But for the most part, the applicant's requesting thirty thousand square foot lots. The rural density residential in Brown calls for thirty thousand. Over here calls for twenty thousand. So the thirty thousand is obviously bigger than the twenty thousand, so staff felt it was compliant with our plans that are out there for both of these designations. So this was the plan that was presented to the joint planning board, so this is what I just wanted to show you here. This is, uh, plan was contemplated under a zero lot line development, which he, at that particular time, not all the lots in the development were thirty thousand square feet. There were some setbacks that were put in there that were not standard to R thirty. So there was a lot of stuff in here that were related to lots and setbacks. But you can see the general layout. There are fifty-two lots, I believe. Yeah, there are fifty-two lots that are contemplated in this subdivision. When you look at the subject property, just sort of go through these, pretty much wooded. A lot of it's wooded. The back part of Mary McCall Road is open field. But you can see this is the east view, just looking across the street from John Nunnery Road. This is the south view. You can see the property on the right with the adequately displayed sign for our rezoning. Mary McCall, you can see, as I said before, it's more of an open field. Again, we put signs out there. As you can see, this is looking south with the property immediately on your left. This is looking across the street. And this is looking north. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When it went to the planning board, they had recommended denial. There were some concerns, I believe, over traffic and density. That was the main things that were brought up for this particular request. So since that particular time, and I'll let the applicant elaborate just a little bit more, he has submitted a new plan. So as you see here, the plan is pretty much, as far as the layout, is the same as the other one. The only thing the applicant has done for this particular request is that he's now taken away the zero lot line, so there's no zero lot lines anymore. So this request meets all R thirty setback requirements and the density requirements for minimum lot size. As I said before, the, you know, with him doing away with the zero lot line, it pretty much goes to a straight R thirty request. He's reduced the lots from fifty-two down to forty-three. At an R, at an R thirty density, I calculated at a back-of-a-napkin type of estimate that the lots that would be allowed under R thirty would be roughly about fifty, fifty-six, fifty-five, fifty-six. So he's proposing forty-two, so he's reduced those lots. And also, something that he's adding is he's adding a thirty-foot wide continuous perimeter buffer around the whole subdivision. A lot of folks were talking about, like, the rural character. How does it not or fit in with the rural area? There's a lot of existing vegetation on the site, so the applicant has proposed to keep the perimeter buffer around the entire, the entire, the entire property. And for areas that do not have existing trees, he would plant trees according to the street tree planting rate for the areas that don't have trees already. So that, I, I think it's fair to say that there's some consideration for trying to preserve the trees that are out there and try to screen it from, from, from view. I know this is a lot to read. I, I'm not going to sit here and read this, and I, I wouldn't expect you to. Basically, the first one says that the applicant wishes to do away with the zero lot line. The big lot, forty-two, will not be subdivided, and all the rest of that stuff there is basically how he's going to handle the landscaping and, and the perimeter buffing for the site. So that's it, Commissioners. I mean, if you have any other questions, I'll be trying to answer. I, I think for the purposes of this, unless you are seeking a deferment back to the planning board, would be that the board would have to agree to accept the plan and the conditions before you go into the, any discussion of accepting or denying the vote. That's all I have.
I have a question before you do that.
Open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have four speakers in favor and four speakers in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Martin Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Martin Jones. I'm the mayor of Towne of Stedman. And this is a, you know, this is a growth opportunity for us. And, you know, we were just trying to, you know, as we all know, in Cumberland County, Grace Creek to the, to the south of us, Hope County to the west of us, and then on the, on the west side of I ninety-five, you've gone pretty much to the north side. So Stedman is actually going to be the next big, big movement as far as expansion. And so that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, trying to get these things in a position of where we can, you know, grow, but we want to grow in the right manner. And, you know, we, we actually have two other, two other subdivisions that are in the works right now. They're inside of the town limits of Stedman. And so we're, we're growing pretty quick, and we just want to make sure that, you know, we grow in the right direction. And, you know, with the, you know, with, you know, one of the things that I saw where they brought it back, that they put the buffer in and reduced the lot sizes, you know, that's going to be, you know, that's going to be a big plus for, you know, satisfying the, I think, the community and the people around.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And appreciate you guys coming last week to the, to our ribbon cutting for all the expansion that we had there at our rec center. Thank you so much for that.
You were.
You know, because it's all about growth, and we want to just make sure we go in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker in favor is Mr. Thomas Neville.
Mr. Neville, welcome.
I'm just glad to take this mask off. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for hearing me tonight. I believe if we could, the two people who signed up behind me are going to concede their time to me so that, being a lawyer, I would get to speak the remainder of the time. I don't know if they need to state that on the record or not.
No, sir.
Okay.
You speak your time.
So my client is actually Mossy Farms LLC. And I want to introduce that entity to you because of essentially who the members are. That's Steve Bunce, Maxton Bunce, and Rhett Bunce. That's important because they live in this area. This is where they live, and they want to move forward with this project, but they intend to remain there for a very long time. It's not an outside developer who's not going to remain into the community. And I think you'll see when we go through the site plan, most of the changes they've agreed to, which should not appear before the planning board, are made with the neighborhood in mind, with longevity in mind, and the idea that they want to preserve the rural character as much as they possibly can and still develop this area. Also, Mossy Farms, it's actually spelled M-O-L-C-I. Farms, it's actually pronounced M-O-L-C-I-E, which is the great-grandmother. So, it could be Molsie, but it's pronounced Mossy. They own a lot of farmland in addition, individually or as the entity. They have no intent to stop farming. This is just a particular tract that's really not very suitable for farming. What I'm told is the land will only basically support tobacco or sweet potatoes in addition to the wooded area, and it's just not very suitable for farming. So, it is 48 acres. If we could possibly put the zoning map back up.
I've got you right here.
So, obviously, the property is 48 acres. It's identified by the blue and the yellow marks. If I could, R40 is up to the north of it. R30 is directly below it. In addition, it's the Wheatland subdivision that is where you see Harvest Grain, Cherry Bar, Eastfield. My understanding, those lots are all one acre or less. I don't know why it's not designated as R30 or something else. Perhaps it's an older subdivision. Point is, it's a large subdivision, nearly to our south. And then, there's another subdivision identified as R40, which I believe is the Tenderwood subdivision. So, I don't think it's really correct to characterize this as primarily A1. If you go down these two roads, Mary McCall and John Nunnery, there is a mixture of A1 and of development subdivisions. And I think what we propose is consistent with the existing subdivisions. Again, if we could, please, sir, go to the-
Okay, sir. Thank you.
He gave you three minutes. He deferred his time.
He did three minutes.
But I think he deferred his time.
No, that's not it. Thank you.
I'm a little confused by you bending my time.
No, each person is allotted three minutes, sir. And, and I didn't hear anything about deferment, and it doesn't work that way. Each person has had three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the record, I would object, and they conceded their time to me, and I have counsel for the applicant.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, he, he did actually state that the two people behind him, which is all the folks on the foreside, wanted to concede their time to him. It's a board decision as to whether or not you want to allow that.
That's right.
So, so really, he's asking, you have two more people that would be doing three minutes. He's, he's asking, he's saying, "They're not going to speak," and he would get the full nine minutes. But that's a board decision to allow, whether or not to allow that. The board did not take action on it when he requested.
Okay, sir. Could the act should be taken now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, was, is there a motion on the floor to continue with this, with, with the public hearing, where everyone would have the opportunity to speak three minutes? Or can we take a deferment?
I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir.
Then he gets the remainder of the allotted time.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second now.
Okay, all in favor.
That is unanimous.
He would have an additional six minutes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
No problem.
So, again, if we could go to the, the site plan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, again, this is the new one, and just to reiterate the changes, primarily, we've gone from 52 lots to 43 lots. And I'd also like you to note that the, there's two entrances to this, to this subdivision, one on John Nunnery Road, one on Mary McCall. And this, this is a little bit unique. What we've tried very much to do is to, is to concentrate the larger lots towards the actual road frontage so that you preserve more of the rural character as you drive past a subdivision. Also, if we didn't rezon this, the number of driveway permits arguably we could obtain from DO2 are probably more than 20 even. So, actually, by doing the subdivision, concentrating the lots in this manner, we only end up with seven possible driveway permits. You may not even use them all. But again, this was all to preserve the, more of a rural character. We mentioned the buffer zone, which I think is very important as well, against the reduction down to 43 lots. I passed a packet out to everyone, or at least, it's important, I believe, and primarily, most of those exhibits or attachments refer to the land use plan or the future land use plan. And the very first one is number three. It's just the, the first page of land use, future land use plan to kind of give you some idea of what you're looking at. The rest of it is excerpts. And what's, what's very important is if you look at number four, which was essentially the previous slide that we had here, it basically shows that the classification for the future land use plan is suburban density residential and rural density residential. What's important is that both of those classifications allow for R30. Therefore, R30 is consistent with the land use plan. And again, that's, if you, in your packet, that's number four, showing the land use plan. I put packet five in there. That's the statute that y'all have referenced a number of times already. Basically, if a proposed use is consistent with the land use plan, if you don't adopt it, then you have to provide essentially reasons why you have not. Because again, this is consistent with the land use plan. Table six actually shows you, it's a crosswalk table. It shows you that the R30 is consistent with the land use plan specifically as to the suburban density residential and rural density residential. Again, staff has recommended approval of this specific site plan because it is consistent with the Stedman Land Use Plan. They've also requested that the applicant, that all internal lots have access from internal streets, which we, which we do. The site plan shows that. And they've also essentially requested that we have certain setbacks, which again, we've, not only have we agreed to R30 setbacks, we've also agreed to a specific buffer around the entirety of the property. I believe that there was maybe some issues before the planning board related to traffic. If you look at the packet from the staff, you'll see that the average day, average annual daily traffic on any of these roads is very minimal, extremely minimal. And we do not believe that there's really any issue with traffic. Again, we've got two entrances into the subdivision to assist in traffic, less, less entrances on the highway. So, we believe that that is a good response to that. As to water and sewer, it's not provided, but in the Stedman Land Use Plan, they specifically states that R30, that both well and septic is suitable for R30. So, again, it is still consistent with the land use plan. My understanding is that to bring sewer out to this area, which is growing in Stedman, the cost to install sewer is extremely cost prohibitive, upwards of a million dollars. So, that's really not something that's feasible in development in this area. Again, with safety, I don't really believe that safety is an issue in that one of the strengths actually listed in the land use plan is the safety in this area, the fire, fire usage in this area. Again, by curtailing the number of entrances into the subdivision, we believe that, again, the traffic issue is addressed. Interestingly, if you look, get to the Stedman Area Land Use Plan, page 10, it lists the threats and the weaknesses. One of the threats that Stedman has identified is that there would be no growth or resistance to growth. And if I could, just real quickly, my understanding is there's a large number of neighbors in support. If you're here in support of this development, could you please stand up? This has a lot of community support. Thank you. In the last 38 seconds, I'd like to talk a whole lot longer, but let me just conclude in this manner. I actually happen to live in the country. I live on a farm, and I actually even farm it, believe it or not. And I would rather stay in an area that was all agriculture myself, and I would rather live in an area that only had fields. But sadly, that's not the reality. The reality is that we are growing, but what we need is smart, managed growth. And I do believe that this site plan, this project, is smart growth. They've taken into account the neighborhood, the rural area, and it's planned in that manner. We're going to grow. We just need to grow smart.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker in opposition is Richard Freeman. Mr. Richard Freeman.
Welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, sir. I'm Richard Freeman, and I live on John Nunnery Road. And I'm going to take a little bit of difference with my young, young man that was up here who said, "There's no traffic on that road." I live there. There's a lot of traffic. Speed limit's 55 miles per hour as far as the infrastructure is concerned. Roads and schools are very much a great concern for us. Population growth, yes. This is not in the city limits of Stedman. And he was talking about, the mayor was talking about, the growth of Stedman. We had an opportunity to grow in Stedman by getting a food line there, but they would not okay the sale of alcohol there. So, you know, I, I don't know how this is going to help the growth of Stedman, this subdivision. The next thing we're very much concerned is the water and sewer situation. There's no water or no sewer. We're, we're going on, on small, small lots. And in the land use program, I think A1 is acceptable. Much has been said about the Stedman Land Use Plan. I was on that group that met and, and did try to come up with, with the plans for the Stedman use. And one thing that we said, and we strictly wanted, was to retain the rural situation. My uncle was the mayor of Stedman for many, many years, 38, Ernest Freeman. And he worked hard to persuade, to provide and to make sure that we kept that rural identity, that community, that sense of belonging. And we, and there's good growth, like you said, and there's bad growth. And we want good growth. One-acre lots, agricultural, two-acre lots, you know, we could live with that. But when we go to R30, in the land use program, we were told that the term that they used was, I think it was, help me out, Jordan, what was it again?
Suburban.
Suburban growth. And no one ever explained to us what suburban growth was. And we told him at that point in time that we wanted to maintain a rural area. I brought this up at the meeting that we had before, and I offended my young man here because I said, "We got hoodwinked." And he came up to me after and said, "No, you won't hoodwink." I said, "Well, everything won't explain, you know, thoroughly to us that we understood that we were going to have R30." And Wheatland is right on, Mary McCall, right down from me, is another development called Tenderwood. And, and they're all on, on one-acre lots. I'm sure they're on one-acre lots, if not, if not, better. Okay? And, you know, like I said, we want to see growth, but we want wise, smart growth. And without water and sewer, we have a problem right now with septic tanks. We have a problem right now with Gen X and water.
Thank you so much for coming, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker in opposition is Ms. Bolivia White Autry.
Welcome, Ms. Autry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm confident with all the information that you've been given this evening, after listening to the other cases, that you will make the right decision based on the information that you're given. We are living in the 21st century, and we do have to have growth, and we do have to have development. But there are a lot of things to take into consideration with that, and we do have sentimental ties to our land. We do, you know, have to set that aside as well. And with that being said, I do represent family land that is beside this development, as well as the family that is developing this land. With that said, our main concerns, putting that family ties aside, is the safety with this new growth coming in of this development of these houses. It is the safety. It's the safety of no city water because there has been Gen X in our water, has been tested, and there is Gen X in even the development next to this development that is going, being proposed now. Gen X has been determined and found in the Wheatland area. It has been found in some of our residential private properties next to us. So, we are concerned with that. I know that is being considered even with this new development, but, or new proposal, but it is something to be concerned about. The growth that Mr. Marty Jones has talked about, yes, we want growth. But I agree with Mr. Freeman. I don't see how this growth is going to help the city. We're concerned about our community. We do not live in the city of Stedman. And all the individuals that stood up in, for the proponents that are for this, how many of them live in the city of Stedman, not in the county, in our communities near Bainbridge Road, John Nunnery Road, Mary McCall Road, that actually live out in our communities? That it really affects and impacts them and their safety. The growth of the schools, you know, there's other developments, as was stated. I do not remember who mentioned that, that are soon coming. I think one of the individuals maybe that was in the Stedman area mentioned new developments coming in the Stedman area. That is additional growth. But we're concerned about our community. We have-
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam Clerk?
Our third speaker in opposition is John Wayne Mosley.
Welcome, Mr. Mosley.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Wayne Mosley. I reside at 540 Bainbridge Road, approximately half a mile from this project here. I'm pretty familiar with Stedman. I've served a term as a commissioner for the town of Stedman. Some of my concerns with this project here is law enforcement. You all know, law enforcement is tough right now. My whole term as a commissioner for the town of Stedman, we had, we had issues with having officers respond, not just in the Stedman area, but as a whole, the whole east side of the river. I'm sure y'all were aware, aware of that situation. So, protecting these people is, is going to be a concern for this project. Code enforcement. I served on the town of Stedman, and, and that was one of my biggest things. Code enforcement in this county as a whole, just, just, just not Stedman. You ride around and look at Cumberland County. I know you're short-staffed, but the maintenance of, of some of these households and mowing and pest and cars in driveways and boats in driveways. And you can ride around Stedman. I fought hard, tooth and nail, to work with your Cumberland County employees to, to resolve this. Didn't see a whole lot of progress. We did make some, make some moves, but I know that things don't happen overnight. Mr. Adams, I, I appreciate what you're saying. You know, since this happened, you know, we were looking at one, one thing. Now, the plan has changed. I think there's a lot of opposition, and they know this. Hence, they're trying to create buffers and, and, and do those things, and I appreciate that. But as a commissioner, as a, as a citizen of the county of Stedman or the town, Cumberland County, area of Stedman, I've talked with a lot of people, and, you know, there's a lot of opposition. I know a lot of folks in this room. I see some of them. Some of them are from Beaver Dam. Some of them are from Cedar Creek. Some of them not in the town of Stedman, but not necessarily right here in this area. And I'd like to remind y'all that the, the planning board voted against this, six to one. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Our last speaker in opposition is Ms. Laura Gilmore Smith.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I would just like to take a moment to thank you for, for your service to our community and to our county. I would like to reiterate some of the things that, that the other gentlemen have and ladies have, have said. Our infrastructure right now is not set up to take 42 new homes. You, you take an average home, it's going to have two children. You put that many more at busting seams for our school district. The classrooms are overcrowded as it is. Our, our fire department- Our, our fire department, it would be strained to take on this many new residents at this time. I go down Mary McCall to go to work and come home from John Nunrie, and for, for them to say there's very little traffic is a great mistake to say that. Like Ms. Autry said, there is Gen X been found in our water system. I live at 8531 Clinton Road, but my family land is over 100 acres that backs up, um, within about a quarter of a mile of this new subdivision. And that little tiny cutout you see there at the R30 is my family cemetery. I don't want another subdivision jumping in right there that, you know, teenage children are, are not nice people to subdivi, to cemeteries at times. And that, for me, is a concern. Um, at, at this point, it's not been an issue, but you add that many more homes, and, and that's a concern of mine. But without water and sewer, I don't understand how this can go through. And like Mr. Mosley stated, um, the planning commission did vote this down in their previous meeting. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. Madam Clerk?
There are no further speakers.
Close the public hearing. Yes, Commissioner Keith.
Uh, thank you. Gosh, I can't tell you how many questions I had. First one is, how did the property south of this get to be R30?
That's a good question. Uh, we, we did some history on that, and I'm prepared to speak on it.
Because they're about the same size, and with all of this happening, if they wanted to put it on that property, it's vacant now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if they wanted to put it on that property, they could probably put as many houses on there now.
Yeah, so we did some analysis. So we picked the, the one to the south, and we picked this Wheatland subdivision because that was brought up. So with your permission, I'll just walk through sort of the history of those, and you guys can see all that. So I'll, so I'll start with the Wheatland subdivision. As you see by the case number 9324, that was approved back in 93. So, um, when we looked at that, it was approved, uh, um, you can see it's 56 acres, the average lot size is 30,000, well, 29,000 square feet. And then you can see the minimum lot size is roughly about, about a, about a half acre in there. Uh, the gross density, when you look at it, is about 1.3 dwelling units per acre. So there are about 75 lots, and they're all on well and septic as well there, too. So, um, as far as the motive of why it's approved, it was, I can just say it was approved back in 93. That's what our records show for that particular subdivision.
So I don't want to, I am gonna interrupt you, but just what you're telling me now is, it is built to R30 recommendations, if it's 29 hundreds, 29,000 square feet.
Well, the R30 says, uh, 30,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. So if they're 29,000, then there's some in there that don't meet it. So I think this is an older subdivision that may have just been there.
All right, please go on.
And then for the one that's to the south, that was, as you can see, P, P 9780, that was approved back in 1997, uh, for about 56 acres, and it was never built upon. Uh, but, but it is entitled, because I think some of the discussion at the planning board is like, I think some people had brought up and said, "Well, that guy's never gonna build on it." But it is entitled to be built upon. If somebody wanted to buy it, they could build on it at an R30 standard.
And he would not have to go with any of these conditions, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It, it would be subject to the base ordinance requirements.
But not all the conditions that we talked about with...
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you.
So, so for this, you know, so for this particular case, again, it was heard back in 97, it was a request for R20. Uh, the planning board did like recommend R20, uh, or no, they recommended denial and recommended R30 instead, and then the commissioners approved R30 at that particular time, and that has a potential yacht, uh, lot yield of 65 lots on that, on that piece of land. So...
Okay. So it's been R, okay, all right. That was my main question for you. Mr. Neville, I don't know if you or the developer, there's been a lot of concern about Gen X and, and all that is, tell me, tell me, what are you gonna do on the deed? What are you gonna do about any of that?
Thinking about it, actually.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, guys. My name is Rep. Bunce. I live at 340 Wade Stedman Road. And the way that we are gonna handle the Gen X issue is that we are gonna put in the restrictive covenants that there are reverse osmosis filters put on every well that is installed on this property. Um, we, I, our intentions are not to install, uh, houses that are gonna be a threat to the community or a hindrance to the community, but a growth to the community. So those reverse osmosis filters, which are proven from the North Carolina government to correct the Gen X, would be our correction for that. And in addition to that, I would like to say, to help ease some of the opposition's mind, that we are gonna have some restrictive covenants that are installed that say, um, what type of house you can have, uh, the minimum square footage of the house that can be built. If you wanna put up a privacy fence, you can put up a privacy fence, but it needs to be this material and of this makeup. And also for the exterior buildings, if you'd like a sec, secondary structure, you can have that, but it's got to be of the same material of the house that'll keep from cluttering it up. We see so many often times that developments are just put in quickly with no thought. But again, I'm from Stedman, and, you know, in a, in a, uh, addition to my, my father and, uh, and Steve here, the applicants are also from Stedman. We wanna ensure, we own farmland across the street here. If you look on the left side of the blue and white circles, we own that land. And we're gonna farm it, and we're gonna ensure that that development put is of utmost, uh, integrity and that it's built with a high class. And, um, so we wanna make sure of that. And then again, we just wanted to, to add there that we did take...
Sir, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I have a quick question, that's okay?
Yes, sir.
How could that conclusion look back in 1993? In 1997, previous boards, you weren't here, I wasn't here.
Correct.
Um, if this gets approved as R30, then wouldn't it be that the farm he just pointed out is consistent with it because there's two R30s right across the street?
Uh...
If they asked for that five years later?
Again, I think that would be up to the board. I mean, because a lot of that depends on what plans say. You know, I mean, our, our current plans do say that it's compliant with the plans. I mean, but, you know, just because it's compliant with the plan, the board has the discretion to go against the plan if you feel like it's necessary. So it's really would be, again, it's just a policy guidance document. If it's something that you didn't support or think did not go against the plan, that would be your discretion.
Look, what I'm asking is, like, in your experience of doing this, just like we just heard from a couple of speakers, that, uh, there's R30 right beside us, there's R30 right beside us, there's R30 right beside us. Well, wouldn't then, if they took the family farm, they intend to farm this year, in five years, come in and wanna have the successful R30 subdivision that will be there now, and say, now there's, this is approved, and there's only one R30 out there, and now there's two?
It's, but, yes. I think that could be said. That's something that we hear quite a bit. Commissioner Booth?
Is that the only tract that, that this movement applicant has?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions.
Commissioner Adams?
And, and it may be the attorney or, or Ross, I don't know. But we don't approve site plans. If it's not commercial, we don't approve site plans. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So all of this really doesn't have, we, we can't do anything with any of that because it's not in our purview. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, that I understood that I was, that I was moving in the right direction.
Along with that, Mr. Chairman, let me clarify something for the record, because the minutes of this meeting are crucial. I've heard, I mean, all I, all that's in this package is an application for a conditional use R30, zero lot line up to 52 lot subdivision. So, so that's what, and I, I heard what was said, but I don't know what you have been presented, because it's not in this package. Any, the, the only thing that's in this package is, it could be up to 52 lots. And I think, from, from my mind, I was, I was at that planning board meeting, the planning board's concern was, R30 is what the, this district, uh, allows, but with it being a zero lot line, most of these lots were, some of them substantially less than 30,000 square feet, and that was what the issue was. Uh, I heard what Mr. Ross said, and you presented a map, but is that, that map is not in our package, is that correct?
Not, not that particular, because the thing is, is the board would have to accept the map in order for it to be...
Right, that's what, and I, I went there to start this whole discussion, is that we do not approve site plans. We do not approve this. This is not what we do. That's back at the planning stage, back there. And so all we have in front of us is a zero lot line, uh, unless we do something a little bit different, but...
With conditions?
Well, I, I don't know...
The application is for a zero lot line of 52...
But we can, I'm sorry.
But we don't approve site plans. I mean, the only commercial, if you, if you do a commercial, do you do site plan? Do we do site plan?
Well, by the ordinance, if you do conditional zoning, a site plan has to accompany that. So, I mean, so when you approve every conditional zoning request, in theory, there is a site plan that's included in your packet as a part of your approval or denial.
And this application is presented as a conditional zoning, but it's for a zero lot line to 52 lots?
Right.
Right, that's what came across in terms of the packet that we got. I mean, I, I understand what's here tonight, but that's not what came, that was what was on my dais when I got here.
Gotcha.
But that was not what was in the packet that was forward to us, that's on this agenda, that puts everybody on notice as to what we're voting on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, and which is why I talked about this at the very beginning of, of this, of this hearing, when, when you said that. Um, and again, this is outside the, the town of Stedman. I think PWC, they got PWC water and sewer inside the city of Stedman, is that correct? I don't know how far this is down there. But we are sitting here, uh, as a board, talking about countywide water and sewer. We went all around this community. Uh, that's what everybody talked about, was countywide water and sewer. Uh, and it, it just kinda hit me that, uh, when you said, "Well, we don't wanna do it because it's gonna cost a million dollars," then it falls on us to do it for a million dollars. Uh, but you get the development and sell all these houses with, uh, all of the income, and then we have to come in and retrofit and do all this. I just don't think, uh, that's what this board ought to do. Um, and they do have, and I've been consistent, you all know, I've been consistent that when there's Gen X on the ground, uh, that I have a problem approving, uh, in, in terms of, uh, having septic, having wells in terms of that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Keith?
And contrary to what Mr. Commissioner Adams is saying, we have the ability to approve this tonight with conditions, correct?
Yes, but I, we need a record of what those are.
Well, it, it can be in our motion, because it, it, I have been pretty consistent, as Commissioner Adams has, is with buffers and setbacks and zero lot lines not being considered. Unfortunately, I think that's the only way he can apply, is with a zero lot line, correct?
He can apply with a straight R30, because with his request right now, that's pretty much what he's taking it to, is just a R30 request with a zero lot line.
But his initial was a zero lot line that went into R30.
It was an R30 zero lot line conditional subdivision.
Right. But, but what the proposal is, and we can put those conditions in with a motion, that the setbacks are in place, that, um, that we can restrict one lot per every 30,000 square feet, in, instead of, and, and for the public out there, it's, if you say R30 and some of it's not built upon, you can squeeze them all into one area, but we're not allowing that, if that were to happen.
Correct.
And I do, I did have a question on, um, the stormwater runoff and, and the stormwater drains that would happen on there consistently. I've had that in rural. Uh, it, it seems to me that this development is actually gonna set a standard, a higher standard than the other four developments that are out there right now, and potentially one just to the south of there, that we can't do anything about. I would be, I would be much more concerned about that property to the south of us than I would be with all these conditions to keep it as best you can in a rural area. So, to clarify, our motion can be to approve with conditions that we set forward if we went line by line down this, this, this paperwork that we got. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
From what you said, Mr. Keith, I really think that you could do it to the conditional zoning, a straight R30 with a 30-foot buffer around the perimeter, because with a straight R30, every lot's gotta be 30,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Council?
Did the planning board ever see any of this?
Not, not this stuff, no, ma'am. We present it to the applicant, and we, and some of them wanna push forward, some of them, you know, so we offer it up. Do you wanna go back to the planning board? Do you wanna move it forward? And sometimes we actually make the call that if it's such a grossly deviating plan, we'll just say, "Look, that needs to go back to the planning board." But again, I think for this particular one, since they offered up pretty much the same site plan, they just tweaked their lots up, and then they put these conditions on this piece of paper. We felt that it, it could, it could come to the board. But the board wants to push it back to the planning board, that's certainly within your purview.
That's what I'm asking.
Commissioner Booth?
Should it go back to the planning board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Instead of us looking at, at totally new stuff.
Okay. Commissioner Booth?
Thanks, sir. Let, let me just ask then, conceptually, is this recording anything binding, or the fact that this is laying up here, anything binding if we approve the proposed plan?
As long as you make it clear in the minutes, because, I mean, your motion, but, but trying to incorporate the stuff that's presented into discussion and with the packages, it's gonna be tough unless you have it very well specified. And I, if, if, if the board's consideration is, is, is the R30, maintaining the R30 site, the R30, 30,000 square foot lots, a straight R30 will do that. To get the additional 30-foot perimeter buffer that they've offered, that would require a conditional zoning. I don't know what other conditions are in the sheet that, that has been presented to you that's not in the package, but you could certainly add any or all of those. But, but those two things seem to address the slot size and add that conditional requirement.
I have too many questions that, like, does a point, 0.69 plus, now taking in, uh, a 30-foot buffer and getting rid of the zero lot lines on the left and right, does that, does that comply with one per? Is that, is that still just R30?
Just, 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 just a straight R30, 30,000 is about 69 hundreds, but, but just a straight R30,000. A straight R30,000 requires every lot be 30, at least 30,000 square feet.
That's what I'm looking at, it says 0.69, but is that before or after the taking out of the framing of 30 feet down the entire borderline? So, you know.
If, if I may, Commissioners, like, it sounds like it's a lot of questions. If, if the board wants to defer it back to the planning board, I think it probably is the safest motion, if you guys are just having way too many questions, we can certainly do that as well.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Booth?
Well, I, I think we tried to do what we could to steer this. Uh, I didn't feel any push on that, but like, if it's right on the border, 0.69, and that's what the lot is, and then you take away 30 feet down the entire length of the lot, that would be a whole lot less. So to get it on the floor for discussion, uh, in the matter of case P 2128, I moved to deny the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to R30 Residential District, conditional zoning district, district as presented, that would allow up to 52 lots, zero lot line division, and find the request is not consistent with the Stedman area land use plan, and that the request and the conditional use subdivision plan submitted for this site are not compatible with the rural character of the area. This rezoning approval, uh, this rezoning approval is not reasonable, not in the public interest, because the district requested and the subdivision plan are not in harmony with surrounding zoning and land use.
There's a motion and a second, um, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't understand Commissioner Booth's question when he said about the 30-foot reduction.
Well, he moved to deny it, so it don't really matter.
I know, but I wanna make sure I, that, that I'm answering your question. The 30-foot perimeter, the property owners would still own that portion and be part of the lot, it's just a buffer which would be restricted as far as, that, that's what a buffer is. It would, they would have to keep vegetation, whatever's specified, in that 30-foot, but it would still be part of the lot.
Right.
Okay.
And I just didn't understand what you were asking.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Keith, I didn't see you like...
Thank you. It seems to me that this developer has done what every one of us has asked at one time, to go meet with the community, to make adjustments, to go in harmony with the community. These are people that live in that community. They have, they have said that the soil in that area is no good for farming, and they are farmers. The, the concern, the concern for the community, again, is the R30 south of, this developer is setting a standard for a development out there in, at R30, uh, that is better than any of the previous developments that have been approved, probably by this board at some time. You know, I would, I would, I understand the thoughts, and going to traditional R30 with the buffer takes care of many of these issues. The only issue it doesn't do is, I don't want this owner of this land to be able to use that land for anything else, because that's what we're doing. It can't grow. The only thing you can do is develop on it, and we've proven that R30... The only issue it doesn't do is, I don't want this owner of this land to be able to use that land for anything else, because that's what we're doing. It can't grow, the only thing you can do is develop on it, and we have proven that R-30 allows for wells, septic tanks, it is in our ordinances. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to support this at traditional R-30 if we can go to that, if, if this fails. Thank you.
And Mr. Keith, to, to support it like you're saying, it'd have to be a traditional R-30 conditional zoning with that.
Right, traditional R-30, not, not as the applicant has, traditional R-30 with the zoning. We are taking away someone's ability to use their land at all. Thank you.
Well, with this vote coming up, I will say this. We, as a board, are dealing with the issue of Gen X right now in other communities. Has been stated that in this particular community, that there's a, there's Gen X there. And so, I just don't understand for the life of me, why we would approve residential, if you have an issue with Gen X there, and you already know that we, as a board, are dealing with it now in other areas of this, of this county. I wouldn't want to wish that on anybody. And so, with saying that, we're going to take this vote, and I'll be voting in opposition. All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Stewart, voting in opposition. Commissioner Keith, vote passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. The next zoning case, P-21-33, has been deferred to the, to September 20th, the final contested case.
One second, let's, yeah, let's give the audience a chance to leave. Okay, Madam Manager.
The next case is case P-21-34.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Stayed that this case is located, you can see pretty much out there in the Eastover area, in the, I'll just say in the eastern part of the county, east central part of the county. The applicant is George Tatum, the agent is Ben Stout, and the request is to go from A-1 Agriculture to R-30 Residential for about 19.6 acres. This, you can see it sits right at the Eastover town limit, this is the parcel that is in question here, in the red with the crosshatch off Rock Hill Road. But you can see here, there is sort of a hodgepodge of R-40, RR, A-1, you have it sort of all over the place here, and it'll probably show up better on the zoning map here when we colorize it. So, as I said, this sits at the town limit of Eastover, but you can see the majority of the land uses are basically, they're vacant, open land, single-family residential. We do have some mobile home subdivisions up here in the upper right-hand part of the area that we sent for notifications. Again, here's the zoning, you can see it's pretty much A-1, RR. It is served by Eastover Water, there is no sewer in the area, as you can see, pretty much good soils. The plan calls for, it was subject to the Eastover Land Use Plan, where it's called for rural density residential, which calls for 1 to 2.2, like, units per acre. We feel that the request is compliant, because it is asking for 30,000 square foot lots. This is the subject property, looking, on Rock Hill Road, looking at the property, currently wooded. You can see this is looking south on Rock Hill Road, with the property immediately on the left-hand side. This is looking across the street, looking west, and this is looking north on Rock Hill Road. You can see our zoning sign to comply with the, our, our public notification requirements, you can see. So, staff had recommended approval of the request, we took this to the planning board, and they also supported the request even though by split vote. It was five to four.
Okay. Open to public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam Clerk?
We have one speaker in favor, one speaker in opposition. Our speaker in favor is Mr. Ben Stout.
Mr. Stout, welcome.
Thank you so much for y'all's time. I know it's been kind of a later evening, but I appreciate you letting me present my case. I'd met with the mayor of Eastover, as well as the town manager of Eastover, and also met with the planning board representative from Eastover, and presented this to him to try to come up with a way to make this project work. Part of what I, my long-term plan is, is to kind of voluntarily annex myself into the town of Eastover, and that's why I met with them, to make sure that this is something that they'd support. It does have public water on it, which I know from the, obviously, the previous case, that sounds like that's something that we need to be intentioned to. So, we have that, and even, I took it another step forward, and we actually have had all the soils tested already, so I went ahead and spent that money up front to try to answer maybe some questions that y'all may or may not have. But in doing so, we've designed a project that complies with this rezoning, that has public water, that has all the hydraulic soils that have been tested, so our neighborhood's designed to adequately take any sewer that would come from these single-family residential homes, and properly do what septic tanks do. So, obviously, those permits come from actually Cumberland County, so if this is approved, we'd obviously then go and get that application submitted, and obviously, those septic systems are what this area has. I'd say the last thing is, in trying to work with everybody to make this thing happen, and meeting with the folks from Eastover, they offer their support, again, the planning staff offered their support, and the planning board offered their support. So, we're excited about it, it's going to be a nicer project. I think that our total lots are around 23, and our average house are probably in the 3 to 350 range, so that obviously kind of helped Eastover with maybe $7 to $8 million of, of single-family residential. So, tried to check all the boxes on this one, and greatly appreciate everybody's support. Somebody who's a lot smarter than me, who actually kind of has done all the plans, Mr. Scott Brown's here with me, so if y'all have technical questions, as it relates to anything technical, certainly he'd be willing to answer those questions for you, and greatly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Madam Clerk.
Our final speaker, who is in opposition, is Mr. Mark Harris.
I'd like to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to be heard. I'm here because I live directly across from where they're going to be building, right here. This is my, that's about eight, just under nine acres right there. Those 20 acres are 19.6 acres, directly across the street from me, and that's a ridge there. If you see 95 coming there, that, all of this land here is high on ridge, it's higher, you have Rock Hill Road, it's a little bit less. So, that's me at 1473, my wife, Regina, and my four kids, we live there. I wish my, my neighbor here, he's a farmer, he has a large horse farm there, but he's, he's at a horse show, so that's where he is. But our concern is, is a few things. I mean, it's, if you look at 95, yeah, there's a lot of, there's some RR and different things here, but all along this part of Rock Hill is A-1, is agriculture, and it's R-40. Mr. Broadwell just built some houses up this side, and it's R-40. My concern is, where I am, is you got this ridge, and you're going to put 23, what is it, 23, 24 septic tanks up there, where do they go? You worked, we talked about runoff and the, the storm drainage, I can tell you where it goes. Another reason I'm here, this area right here, there's a, there's a culvert that comes right over here, you can kind of see that discoloration there. That culvert comes onto my land, and that's where that runoff's going, it's on my land. So, that goes there, that, that ditch then falls along this line and ends up in the Cape Fear River, but it's septic tanks. I couldn't, you know, so talk about the planning board, or the planning office said, talk about the, the good soil, I got eight and a half acres, I had everything tested, I got it posted stamped, actually. You get, the one house is all you're going to get on my land, so, and I'm sure being up on that side where it's high, that there is probably some better soil up there for drainage, but I'm concerned with all the springs. I have four active springs on my property alone, four active springs. There's springs up here, they feed into that area, in the middle of a drought, it, there's water running on my land, nonstop. I'm concerned about the septic's feeding into those springs, feeding into my land. So, that's what I'm concerned about, my other neighbor's concerned about that as well, as, as the ditches, they came, I don't know, you guys know Buck Plyler, he ditched all this, but it comes back all through there, and other people, there's about 15 houses that go Broad Muskeg all the way coming back onto Buckland Drive. And I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm the small lot around there, to be, to be honest. I mean, I'm looking for consistency in, in this agriculture and this R-40. Now, if you want to jump on, over the side of 95, yeah, you can find something different, but if we're consistent in there, that, that's what I would like to see. And so, I, my concern is the runoff, my concern is the septic tank sitting uphill from me. My dad told me that stuff, that runs downhill, and I'm downhill, so that's my concern.
Thank you, sir.
No further speakers.
Close the public hearing, is there any questions or comments?
I can answer that.
Yeah, I want you to go over there.
Yeah, I know there's a no chase to the south. 24, you got 24, there is no exit where it crosses.
It's not working. You're being not working for you.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so you got Murphy Roads up here, and that exits up there, and then you have 24 down here, an exit on 24, and you get back up to Rock Hill, you take down and up to Rock Hill.
Got you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Booth, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the property owner to the south and across the street from this property, is that the James McNeil Williams?
You're talking about over here? You said?
Directly, the two lots that go across Rock Hill Road, go to the subject property, okay? I'll go, yeah, that one. All right, I go below it, and then across, those two.
These two?
Yeah.
That I don't know, maybe somebody with a little bit more local knowledge, you'd probably be able to say.
Actually, I think it's his wife's family land, they're both deceased now, and that's my other concern, is that land will soon be up for sale, and there'll be 25 more houses going right there. And that also is on that high side of this land, where it also drains back into that area.
Okay, and is Joyce Fisher still alive?
Yes, sir, that's the.
She's above and across.
Yes, sir, that's, that's the horse farm I was telling you about, that's his mother, he actually lives right here, but he farms that land, this is all their farmland, they lease that as well.
That is, sir?
And the Masters live behind you?
Yes, sir, they have 20 acres right here, that's the La Masters.
What do they use it for, just residence?
They, they do have a pond, that was one of their concerns, they're out of the state as well, is the water coming in, and that, that's a pond there, looks like a goblet or something, that's, that's the pond, and that's their 20 acres, and, and, no, they don't farm, per se, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion? Everybody just out. Is there a motion on this?
While he's looking that up, can I get another question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just not trying to read a crystal ball, but I think that other lot way up there where it says A-1 Town of Eastover, to the left of that is also Mac Williams' land.
Here?
Yes. And so, those three lots are going to be open, and right now, there reside a bunch of, that's, that's, that's in the middle of a bunch of farms and agriculture.
Yes, sir.
So, if this goes to be residential, the two lots below it, and the one up to the left.
Yes, sir, I'm concerned about the president.
Okay. Are we ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in case P-21-34, I move to deny the rezoning request from A-1 Agriculture District to R-30 Residential, and find the request not consistent with the Eastover Land Use Plan, denial of this request is reasonable and in the public interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
The character of the surrounding land use activities and zone, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's, there was, first, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Voting in favor.
This is to deny, his, his.
Motion to deny.
Voting in favor to deny, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Stewart. Voting in opposition to denying is Commissioner Lancaster, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Keith, and Chairman Evans.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That should leave us.
Nothing has happened, nothing has happened.
You got a motion in favor.
The motion failed.
Oh, okay.
Before I make a motion, I have a question. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The developer started at the beginning saying it is his goal to be annexed into the, the town of Eastover. And I probably should know this, but I don't. Eastover Sanitary District, is it, how close is, is there any sewer close there?
I have to pull the case back up, if you can bear with me just a second, we have a map. I know there's water, I think I showed you there's water out there.
Right.
I'm not sure where the sewer.
And, and I appreciate Mr. Harris, I mean, if, Mr. Harris is out there, he's building himself a good life for his family, and it's, it's starting to crumble all around him here. And, but if he's going to be annexed into and, and sewer is available, he wouldn't have to worry about septic tank runoff.
Right.
Okay, well, hey, uh, Mr. Harris, could you come up? Can you come up? It's, we're on TV.
I'm just remembering back, is I think there was a portion, I don't know if he can voluntarily be annexed into Eastover or not. It's not Eastover as of right now, he's in the county.
Right, correct.
And I, I, and you guys would remember better than me, when this land, I remember I was in a little bubble there that said we could not be annexed by Eastover or Fayetteville for a period of time, and how long that was, I was thinking it was 15 years, and I've been there 10 or 12, that, that was maybe 10, there's still years left on that, where we can be annexed. I don't know when, if they ever bring sewer out, my neighbors don't have sewers, the ones that are in Eastover there, that may be their choice. I don't know, I don't know if it's available to them, but you may be able to.
You got the water lines up there where there's no, there's no readily identifiable sewer, at least on this map. I'm not saying that it's not in proximity, but it's just.
So, even if you go into Eastover, the town is not.
Well, the town is literally right here, I mean, so all of this.
Township starts right here, Broad Muskeg, Broad Muskeg, there's a little sign, there's Eastover Township right there.
In fairness, in fairness, I think Mr. Stout had something to say on that, too, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, since I asked Mr. Harris. Yep.
So, while I'm certainly not a legal expert, and there are a lot of smart people here who are, my understanding is that you couldn't be involuntarily annexed into Eastover or the city of Fayetteville. So, in, in this situation, in meeting with the mayor, and we, meeting with the town manager, you can voluntarily annex yourself into it, and that was what I was planning on doing to be actually be in Eastover proper to, for the folks who would buy, optimistically buy these homes, would be able to have the benefits of that. So, yes, you can't be, I think, the way I understood it was involuntarily, but we can voluntarily annex ourselves into the town of Eastover.
What's your, what's your, why do you want to give you annexed into this?
Well, so, and, and I think meeting with Mr. Rawls and his staff, and it is, you know, understanding that, obviously, when you're in the county, it kind of has a different tone to it, right? I mean, in the county, typically a project like this, I mean, I've been before, before, I would typically ask for like an R-40 type zoning, but being that it's on public water, and with the way the economics of things are these days, it made that become very, like, infeasible. And so, my mindset in meeting with them was if, by coming into the town of Eastover, A, they get the benefit of it, B, Eastover gets the tax, tax benefit of it, and it becomes something that's not standalone in the county, kind of maybe the words that I've heard a lot, that are setting a precedent. I mean, this to me would be, if, you know, part of the town of Eastover is kind of a compromise between maybe like the R-20 and the R-40, and in meeting with the, the town of Eastover, they thought that that was a, a good compromise that they could get behind. And so, that's really the reason that we went this direction, was, I guess, working with the staff and working with the town of Eastover, to try to come up with something that's, I guess, palatable, and taken in consideration of everything.
Okay, Commissioner Booth. Okay, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just two final thoughts. Um.
Do me a second.
The thrill of being, I think, tied onto the Eastover water system, unless we were given a lot of wrong information at several meetings, that that's not the most stable. It's not new. Um, and it's my understanding that you're going to have to repair it or block it. Uh, so, I mean, it's not a, I mean, like, tapping a bunch of houses on it, maybe the, the bursting bubble. And secondly, I ran into Mac Williams, and I'm not sure if he's talking about this land, but he had just left a planning board meeting, this must have been ten or twelve years or so ago, and he said he saved his land again. And I don't know what, if it was this land or not, but he got all enough fired enough to go up to the planning board meeting and oppose some rezoning out there. And if it's, if it was this, I'm not going to be the one that interrupted his cup of coffee that, that night. Yes, Commissioner Adams.
And, and, you know, just if we rezone this, there is no, um, if he decides not to go into the town of, of Eastover, it's just done.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, that's, that's the other, I mean, and not that I don't take him at his word, but, you know, when you start looking at economics and what it costs and what it does and everything, uh, sometimes plans change, and everything's flexible, so.
I'm struggling with this. I, I really am. Um, first of all, I know both these guys, and I consider both of them friends. And, uh, I'm gonna upset one of them tonight, I'm sure. But the, i- if the goal is to be in the town of Eastover, maybe the current owner should petition for annexation now, and, and with the town of Eastover.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to do that. I'm, I'm a lawyer, Paul. I wouldn't do that and, and take that cost and run the risk of then and not getting rezoned. I probably just want Mr. Stout.
If he gets petitioned, if he gets petitioned into the town of Eastover, Eastover will rezonate.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, Commissioner Adams, that, that's. Oftentimes in these projects, you know, there, there are certain things that you can't predict the future, right? So like, for example, like DOT, turning access, that's what Scott and those guys do. But to, to me, it's a situation where, I, listen, I mean, and I appreciate you, I mean, I try to always, hopefully, folks run a fact check on me. They know that I, I kind of get away by doing the things I say I'm going to do to the best of my ability, right? But same point, Tom, I mean, if that's something that, I, I understand your concern, but if that's something that you'd want to say a, as a condition of this, but we can't, we didn't feel it was proper to do it now, not knowing if this deal would get done. I mean, if this doesn't get happen, this deal won't happen, right? And so I didn't want, the landlord doesn't want to have something that then is in the town of Eastover, and he's dead in the water. So, but a hundred percent, I mean, i- if you want me to put my money where my mouth is, I'm absolutely happy to do that, because that, at the end of the day, is what I, is what I've told everybody in Eastover. It's what I told Mr. Crumpler, who's in charge of the planning board, and I wouldn't back up on my word, because that's just.
I don't think we can put it in anything, because then it's not voluntary, because then it's like we made you do it, so.
Okay.
Then we, we run into some serious problems.
Well, see, you're smarter than I am.
I'm not smarter than you, but I just.
Okay, Commissioner Booth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did just lay off, okay. Um.
I have a motion.
Madam, not Madam Chair, Commissioner Council.
In the, for the case P-21-34, I move to approve the rezoning request from A-1 Agricultural District to R-30 Residential District, and find the request consistent with the Eastover Area Land Use Plan, which calls for rural density residential at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, because the R-30 Residential District allows dwelling types and a density that promote harmony and character with the surrounding land use activities in zone.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Keith.
I am really sorry. It, it seems to be that, it, Rawls, is there any, or, Mr. Chairman, is there any condition that we can put on this to talk about stormwater runoff?
No, sir. It's not a conditional request.
Okay, back to the vote.
All right.
All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Council, Keith, and Chairman Evans. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Lanca-, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Adams.
I look like it.
Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Stewart. The motion passes.
Together.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move now to items of business. And before Mr. Walker comes to the podium, I do want to clarify the positioning of these items. At the agenda session last Tuesday, the board discussed items 5A and 5B at the same time, and made one motion for both items. However, 5A was specifically sent to the agenda as an item of business, but 5B was sent to the consent agenda. And as I was reviewing and approving the agenda, I struggled with one being on consent and one being on items of business. So I wanted, in full disclosure, for you to know that I moved both items together as an item of business. And so just in the spirit of full disclosure.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Yes, Commissioner Adams.
That was my motion, but your decision is much smarter than that motion, so bringing them both to items of business, because this is the one I said we should move to item of business, so I, I think, great call.
Okay, okay, thank you. And so this evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'll ask Mr. Walker to review, begin with item 5A, and discuss the action that was taken on that item first.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, thi- this project, as you all know, is, has undergone multiple revisions in project scope, um, as we've worked to explore meeting room concepts for the Board of Commissioners. We started with, uh, an estimated cost to renovate this room, 118 and 119, to the tune of close to about $2.3 million as an estimation developed by the Wooton Company. And also taking a look at what we like to call the historic courtroom proper over in the historic courthouse at a cost of somewhere in the vicinity of $2.6 million. After that, we refined the scope once again to incorporate a bathroom on the second floor of the historic courthouse, ADA outfits, an executive meeting room, technology improvements and infrastructure. And the Wooton Company came back with a proposal that would cost roughly $5,000 to come and give us a total cost to incorporate the historic courtroom renovations and all of the previous mentioned items. Staff was then instructed to come back and refine the scope once again to incorporate what it would cost to renovate the historic courthouse from the basement to the third floor. And so incorporated within that is not only the second floor bathroom with renovations and ADA outfits, the addition of the executive meeting room, technology and infrastructure improvements, but also offices for county commissioners, county manager's office, clerk to the board, county attorney's office, public information office, and budgeting. And so the Wooton Company once again came back with an estimate to, with a proposal, rather, to develop an overall cost to incorporate all of those items in addition to renovating the historic courthouse from the basement to the third floor at a cost of $32,875. Concurrently, we submitted a request for qualifications for local firms to develop, or to come in and do a study for a general government services building. And this study would be a space utilization and site analysis study. Incorporated within that study would be the Judge E. Maurice Braswell Cumberland County Courthouse, the Cumberland County Historic Courthouse, and 109 Bradford. And incorporated within that study, uh, the, the AE firm would take a look at the facilities, the apartments currently housed under the, uh, of direction of the county manager, and see which one of those, which of those, uh, staff sections could be relocated to a future government services building. And additionally, they would develop a conceptual design for a future facility that would house all of these staff sections. And then they would also develop a proposal on how we could reuse any of the other buildings to include the historic courthouse in the event that we decided to build General Government Services Building. In this study, then, uh, they would give us a location, uh, usage, and, uh, improvements, once again, to those existing facilities. And so the final report would be presented to the Board of Commissioners, and the Commissioners would then utilize that to make a determination whether to go forward with the project into the design and construction phases. So, uh, I know I said a lot. Yes, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, sir.
He gonna recognize, got that military in him, just like you.
I wanted to say checker hold a couple times.
You better wait for the chairman to recognize you.
Mr. Chair?
Young man. Yes, sir. Commissioner Booth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Come on down off that hill.
The report, the last few months of report has us, has so much information we need. Any idea, I always hate to ask this, is when would be done? Ballpark. Not, not a date, just a ballpark.
Uh, ballpark?
Two years, two days, two months?
The, the report for the General, General Government Services?
Last thing you said about Bradford Avenue, this, and.
So, uh, i- if the, the board approves the, the AE firm that our selection committee, uh, determined to be the, uh, the priority choice, their estimate is to have the study back to us and to be able to present it to the Board of Commissioners in six months.
You can pull them. All right. Mr. Ray, you can pull that off. I'll, I'll start saluting you even if you don't know it.
Commissioner Keith.
First of all, I'm sorry I missed that meeting, because I don't know what happened. We've been talking for four months about this place or that place.
They're not missing anything. I did that, too.
I think, I think you did it all right.
I missed one. Oh, I did. Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to make a, a statement.
Yes, sir.
If this past year has taught us anything, it's that government must continue to operate regardless of a pandemic, a natural disaster, or any other challenge that we, we see. I personally think that we should move forward with the renovation of the historic courthouse to make it compatible to the public to participate in the process of government by making the facility to allow for safe social distancing, uh, and provide solutions that are in compliance with ADA, ADA funds. I'd like to make a motion with the following conditions. That the renovation of the historic courthouse be 100% from American Rescue Plan funds to allow us to have facilities that are, um, that allow for social distancing. Even here tonight, I don't think there was a lot of social distancing in a packed room. And there would be people who thought we may not have been as responsible as we should have. But we also know that it has problems with the American Disabilities Act. So my motion is that the funding be allocated from monies received entirely from the American Rescue Plan, that a renovation not exceed $3 million, and that the renovation allow for the social distancing and pandemic protocols in accordance with the, and in accordance with the American Disability Act. I'd like to make the motion that we dedicate $3 million for renovation of the historic courthouse for county offices and council, and county commissioner chambers. That's my motion.
I have a question and clarification. Is that up to $3 million? Like, if they bring it in at 1.9?
Not to exceed, not to exceed.
Okay, I'll second it.
And, and, um, I have a question.
Sure.
To, um, not to you, sir. I'd like to know that the RF, the ARP money, could that be used for the old courthouse reva-, uh, um, restoration of the courthouse?
As long as there is a component to make it compatible for use for the type of environment we've been in for pandemic-type stuff, it, that it's been, that has been said, it would be okay.
Okay. There's a, uh, yes, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, you tasked a committee of AR, uh, to, to do the ARP and to come back with proposals to this board, and I think Commissioner Keith chairs that. And I think that committee is doing excellent work. I, I think this American Rescue Plan, I always talk about the R in that, which is the rescue. Uh, and, and I, I heard what the attorney said, but you know, one of the things that, uh, it talked about is not surplanning money, or something that was already planned and on the table prior to, um, to COVID coming in effect.
Lost service.
Right, and so we talked about this over a year ago. Uh, so I'm not so sure that it really falls within that ARP concept that we're talking about. So, I mean, I'm not the attorney, and I'm not playing that, but I just know that the trick, the, the money, the guideline from Treasury talks about surplanning and what happened before then. And we were talking about this before March 30th, so I think we have some serious issues in terms of using art funds. Uh, I mean.
I appreciate your comments.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, because whatever money we don't do right, we have to pay back to, to the federal government own. And so I'm just trying to get there, um, you know, um.
And you're correct. I mean, if, if what the, the, the discussions I've heard about the regulations on the, on the March 3rd date, if it was something that was in our capital improvement plan, if it's something that money has been allocated for, then, then you're right.
How much money was allocated in our capital improvement plan for the historic courthouse, aside from the $80,000 for the elevator?
I don't know.
I do. Nothing.
Well, not sure. We spent money, uh, we've already spent money along the way to do all of this.
Maintenance of the facility and improvement to, to the, to the, it, it's, now is the time for us to be able to do that. We have an opportunity to do this at, at this time. I specifically said, if it doesn't come through with the ARP money, then it doesn't happen. But right now, we should be looking forward to doing a renovation in that courtroom. We're doing it every month. We've been in this room right here for 50 years next year, and there hasn't been a, hardly a renovation in this room at all.
Okay, um, one more question before I call for, well, we had a motion. I'm not understanding what you're saying. Mr. Attorney.
The discussions of the regulations that I've been involved in with, are that if you are, and this question's come up, renovating any type of county facility, if the renovation is something to accommodate use during a pandemic, in other words, if you, it would be difficult to do that in this room, that, what, what, in terms of social distancing with a number of people, petitions, whatever. If you renovate a building to be able to operate your government during a pandemic, that would be acceptable. To Mr., Commissioner Adams' point, if, if it was something that there was some real plan for before March 3rd of this year, then, then it's off, it's off the table. And I, and I don't know what, I know we've talked about this stuff, but I don't know whether it's ever been part of the CIP, or, and, and being listed on CIP is one of the things that would make it ill, ill.
So is there, Madam Manager, so is there anything that would prevent this from being used as funded, uh, the ARP money being used for this?
Well, um, at this point, no funds have been allocated in the CIP plan other than elevator moderniz-, modernization and that type of thing, and some outfit to some areas. At this point, before March 3rd, we have been spending money with a consultant for us to come up with numbers. As you may recall, just to outfit the room itself was about $2.2 million. But that did not include the ADA outfit, the second floor bathroom renovations, the addition of an executive meeting room space, or the technology infrastructure improvements. The technology itself is estimated about $1 million. You have to remember, there is no technology in that room. So we've just been in the discovery phase. And at this point, we were, at the last agenda session in June, the committee or the board asked us to look into those improvements, but also moving management, the Board of Commissioners, the clerks, and the attorney's office, and doing a larger renovation. And that's what brought us back this evening. renovation, and that's what brought us back this evening, seeking direction, or last Tuesday at the agenda session.
Okay, I understand what brought us back, but what I'm asking is, um, the guidelines that were set, that we were, just talking with the attorney about, is there something, and from what I understand, it's a certain time period that it has to be done, or it should be done, before we use ARP funding? Have, are we within that timeframe?
Has it, I mean, the first easiest question, has it ever been listed as a, as a CIP, or a CIP?
N- n- not the major renovation.
You said elevator modernization was?
Yes, we, yes.
We, we programmed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for elevator modernization.
And has, other than the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand allocated for elevator modernization, has any other funding been allocated before March third?
Not that I know of.
Before March third, no.
No.
Okay.
Then.
So, we're, we're well, if we go that way, we're well within our right, where there's no possibility of refunding any monies back.
But, yes, sir.
We are.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's been a motion, there's been a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Counsel, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't know what I did over here, something. But, we have been talking about this and renovations to the courthouse for a long time. I believe that this courthouse house was built so that it could add floors going up.
Correct.
There's no, um, I'm not sure that we need to be separating commissioners from, and the manager's office, and the attorney's office, and the public information office over in that building. I think there are a lot of hidden costs over there. There's no parking, absolutely no parking, and I believe we need to stick to our original plan for, uh, additional courthouse space, additional courtrooms, and I don't think we need to be stopping to piecemeal something at this point. That's my feeling.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions, but we made the motion and seconded, have we? Where are we at with this?
Yeah, you gotta.
Um, Commissioner Booth, would you be amenable to including, getting cost estimates for going up to sixth floor, seventh floor in that study that they're already doing? Or is that gonna be a part of it?
That's part of the.
That can be included, that can.
That's in there.
Okay.
So, i- i- if the Board approves the RFQ, uh, then we can write that.
That's in the next part.
I- in, into the scope of work.
Okay, so we're at what point in this?
He made a motion.
Yeah, he made a motion, and it was second. Okay, and the mo- repeat the motion, please. Madam Clerk.
Uh, well, you have yours written down, Commissioner Keith.
Okay, my, my motion is that, um, that we proceed with renovation of the historic courthouse, provided that all of the funding can come from ARP funding, not to exceed three million dollars, to make it ADA compatible and, uh, with COVID restrictions and social distancing for the public.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Commissioner Keith, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Booth. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Council, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Stewart, the motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
I, I do wanna, um, say this. I think the next step is for Mr. Walker to work with Wooton to determine what can be accomplished within three million dollars, and so, that would be entering into, uh, another contract agreement with him, because, um, again, we were at two-point-two million dollars without ADA, without, um, the technology infrastructure. So, at this point, I think we need to go back to Wooton and, and determine what can be accomplished with three million dollars, and.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. So, um, I guess that leads us to item B.
Madam Manager, if I may, I, I'm still willing to go forward with the assessment.
And that, that was item, that was five B, that's where I was going.
I apologize.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, I, I don't understand why we go forward with that, if you talking about moving to the old historic courthouse. It just, just the money, I mean, it, it, that doesn't, that just doesn't make sense. I mean, we just throwing good money, I mean, uh, that.
Well, a- and you know what, and to think about it, we've always been throwing good money away. We have. I mean, we, I mean, not, not trying to be argumentative, but, um, but, uh, we've given to organizations where, um, the money was used in their, or haven't been used, we just holding on to it. We just holding to it, just in case. That, um, um, Civil War Museum, we're still, we're still holding on to that. And so, if there, if there's a need for money, let, well, let's remove that out of the kitchen and use that.
You can make that motion.
But I don't think that will happen.
You can make the motion.
Okay. Uh, yes, Commissioner Booth.
Oh, I was just gonna move, since this was pretty much on the consent agenda, and it's already part of the study anyway, uh, just to approve B as presented.
Approve what?
Second.
I mean, the rest of us were there and approved it, the only one who wasn't here just seconded the motion to approve it.
All in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Lancaster, Keith, Chairman Evans, Commissioners Booth, voting in opposition, Commissioners Council, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Stewart, the motion passes.
Madam Man.
Item number six are the Board's nominations.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The Board's nominations, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Don't forget to call me, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, he did nomination.
Yes, the Mid-Carolina Rural Transportation, which needed a commissioner, nobody volunteered, uh, because they didn't wanna fill out the form. I've already filled it out, so, uh, the nominee would be Glenn Adams. Uh, the Joint Appearance Commission, uh, there is no, we don't have, it's a one vacancy, uh, there is no recommendation from the Joint Appearance Board, so, uh, we can move that to, uh, next month's meeting. The Regional Land Use Advisory Commission, Board of Directors, one vacancy, uh, that recommendation would be Ross Howard, who is the planning inspector, inspection director. Uh, there is a nomination for Federal Technical Community College Board of Trustees. I don't know if anybody has any nominations. Uh, Miss Larry King, I meant, uh, uh, Mr. King, uh, and the board over there recommended Esther Thompson for that. Uh, so those would be the nominations, Mr. Chairman, and that will take us into the appointments.
Yes, sir.
For the, for the seniors.
You nominated.
I think she stood.
Excuse me?
You nominated, Ms. Thompson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Uh, for the appointments, um, the senior advisory board was one commission. I move that Shamona Ross, S-H-A-M-O-N-A, uh, be appointed to the senior citizens advisory commission.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Voting in favor, unanimous.
The Board of Adjustment has three vacancies. Uh, we would, um, uh, I would move that Linda Amos be moved to a regular m- uh, member, Robert Davis be moved to a regular member, and Kenneth Turner, uh, as an alternate member.
Second. All in favor?
Voting in favor, that is unanimous.
The Transportation Advisory Board has two vacancies. I would move that Deborah Kenny be the large representative, and Randy Hume be the urban transit provider representative.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
That is unanimous.
There was a second, uh, well, I don't know, there's one up there at B and one down at D, so I'm not sure. Is that, uh, a second vacancy on the Joint Appearance Commission? I would move to appoint Kenneth Rogers.
All in favor?
Do we have a second, please?
Second, second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
That is unanimous, thank you.
Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number eight, closed session. The first closed session is for economic development matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A four, and also eight at B is personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six.
Is there a motion in going to closed session?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
We're now in closed session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, so, we are adjourned.